It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Legions. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you all don't mind, a moment of silence, please, for the two fallen, and I should, fallen is probably the wrong word, but the two EMS gentlemen that were killed today in an automobile accident while they were out. So, please, a moment of silence. Thank you. Patty, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Marino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marciano?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Litt?
I gotta adjust my chair. I'm sorry. It's brand new. I can't. Anyway, all right. We'll figure it out. Uh, yes. Okay. Please remind you, did I ask for any additions, deletions, and modifications?
Go on, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, we go right to announcements and presentations, and I would like to welcome Representative Rick Roth to the podium. Thank you, sir.
So, we can't figure out a way I can face them and you at the same time? Okay. Well, good evening, and I want to give a special thank you to City Manager Ferris for his kind efforts to welcome me to the city council meeting by sending me his report, which I'm sure you have in front of you, of what y'all thought of the legislative session. I guess my job is to, this evening, is to give you my perspective, and I have to tell you, being that this is my first legislative session ever, I jokingly used to tell people, like Donald Trump, "I've never run for public office before. I'm a businessman," so I have a totally different perspective, I think, than a lot of people in Tallahassee. And so, I would like to kind of give you a little bit more kind of a personal feel to it than just the facts, ma'am. So, the bottom line is, we started off with a lot more rules, a lot more transparency. Lobbyists had to register to lobby a bill. They couldn't Twitter or Tweet us in committees or on the floor. It was, we had to even sponsor each appropriations bill, so everybody had to take ownership, and I took several from this area and was hoping that they would make it through, but unfortunately, I think they did not. I had a septic-to-s sewer bill, and I also had a Corbett Levy bill that I thought were very, very good-assed, and things were badly needed, and they were kind of under-the-water things. The committee process is a really important process. It is really our opportunity to amend bills or to stop bills. Once the bills get to the floor, it is relatively difficult to kill a bill. We did have one bill, HB 81, which people called "The Wall," or "The Whiskey Is In Wheaties" Bill, which would allow Walmart and Costco and all those people to sell liquor in grocery stores. That bill passed 58 to 57, barely got through the House, and I'm just very thankful that the governor did veto it. I was against the bill. It was one of those bills that I thought was really going to hurt small businesses. The way I like to think of bills is, okay, if you did pass it, what would it really look like that would be okay? And for me, that bill would have been okay if it would have had a flat five-year moratorium, so anybody that was a small liquor store owner could prepare for the future. I did have the opportunity of stopping several bills anonymously. That's the way you do it in Tallahassee. You don't want anybody to see your fingerprints on a bill that you stopped. I did stop one by going to the committee chair. I stopped one by accident, by running the clock out, which was a good thing. And I did try to stop one on the floor. It failed. It was a Greyhound Racing Bill, but again, it also failed in the Senate. I did have the opportunity to run several bills. I did pass two of them. One of them was a certificate of need bill. There's a teaching, I always get this messed up in my head, a teaching nursing home in Palm Beach County that wanted to add a teaching hospice, and they had been denied a certificate of need, saying there was not the need for more beds. But this was not really an issue of beds. This was an issue of better service. So, this, if the governor signs it, there will be a teaching hospice and a teaching nursing home here in Palm Beach County. Let me talk about eight bills very quickly that I picked, that I thought you would like to hear about. The first one, obviously, is Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida. That was probably the toughest decision I made in the House. One that was also very tough was homestead exemption, but that was a tough bill, because there is a lot of good that comes from Visit Florida and Enterprise Florida, but really, this was a bill of accountability. This is a bill of being more transparent and making sure that the dollars, the taxpayer dollars spent are being spent the right way, and it did cut the amount, but you know what? I would rather go a little bit too far in the name of transparency and saving money than not go far enough. The other one that was kind of tough, too, which I call the different approach, was the choice in accountability in education. And what was, what's been said about that, obviously, is it gives a lot of money to charter schools, and it does. It gives money to schools of hope, but it also gives over $200 million more to public schools, and it gives an additional $233 million for teacher bonuses and principal bonuses, and it really is a different approach, bringing more money and having it go another way. The other issues, really money issues that were big, were the tax issues. You had two proposed constitutional amendments. One was to limit the, permanently limit the increase in non-homesteaded property tax to 10%. The way it works in the legislature, the first time you put a cap, it's temporary for five years, so it has to come back, and this was the time that it came back, but it has to go to the voters to be voted on, but if they vote on it, it caps non-homesteaded property at 10%. The other one that's like that is, obviously, the homestead exemption, which has gotten a lot of press, and as you well know, for houses that are valued $125,000 or over, we'll have 75,000, if it passes, we'd go from $50,000 of exemption to $75,000 of exemption. That also was a very tough decision, and it kind of comes down to, I think a lot of people, it came down to, you know, let the voters decide if that's how we're going to do it. It was a tough call for me as a first-timer, because I got lobbied hard by a lot of people, a lot of municipalities, a lot of county government people, and it was a tough decision, but I had to make a decision whether I wanted lower taxes and let the people decide or not. So, I voted for it. Also, there was $180 million in tax cuts, which we can talk more about later. My best decision, I think, and the most exciting bill on the floor, was what we call self-defense immunity, which some people are calling "stand our ground." And that was a bill that provides, because of a Florida Supreme Court ruling, it provides that when there's a claim of self-defense raised in a criminal pre-trial immunity hearing, the burden of proof shifts from the defendant, which is what the court ruling was, it shifts back to the party seeking to overcome it, which would be the state. We did have some compromise language, which the House forced, kind of forced the Senate to blink. The Senate wanted a tougher version. We gave a little bit of a compromise. Instead of having the standard of beyond a reasonable doubt, which is the highest standard, we lowered it one notch to clear and concise evidence, and we saw that as a compromise to the state. Another exciting bill that's kind of new was a religious freedom bill called Prayer in Schools. That was HB 303, and that was an interesting bill, because that was one of the few bills that was highly bipartisan. It had a lot of Republicans and a lot of Democrats voting for it, and what it does, it authorizes public school students and personnel to express religious viewpoints and engage in certain religious activities without discrimination, and the enforcement is under the Religious Freedom Restoration Act of 1998, which is a federal act. Two local bills that everybody was very excited about, actually, one of them was run by our own Representative Bill Hager in Palm Beach County, which is, we affectionately or unaffectionately call it "Sober Homes" Bill. There was a lot of regulation in that bill. It authorized the state to investigate and prosecute patient brokering offenses. It requires the Department of Children and Family to conduct background screening for owners and employees of substance abuse service providers. That's the correct term, substance abuse service providers, and it also provides fines and penalties. Now, we all know, as people, representatives in the state of Florida and city council members, that this is not really the fix. This is trying to do what we can regulatory-wise. Really, this is really a federal issue, and it's something we need the federal government to address. It's very simple to me. The right way to deal with sober homes would be, what would the right word be? Zoning? You like zoning? Would be the right way to do it, and we're not allowed to do that under the federal law. Is that my five minutes?
I don't know.
I hear a Twitter. Okay, all right. There it is again. Okay, so, there was also a controlled substance bill, which actually describes as murder the unlawful distribution of opioids, and that's if you're in control of more than 10 grams. The last one, which I read in your paper, was a little, maybe I'm a little sideways with you guys a little bit, but I think it's fairly, it may not be quite so bad, is what we call transportation network companies. The local folks would call that Uber, and it was, and it was the state preempting local regulations in order to provide a more favorable, business-friendly environment for Uber and Lyft and other transportation network companies. And I'm open for some questions. I tried to do that as fast as I could. How did I do?
Thank you. Who has questions for the representative? Carl? Mark?
I want to thank you for going up to Tallahassee and representing us. First time being in the legislature must have been quite an eye-opening experience. I know we run for these offices, and we're all new here, too. My only, and I thank you for supporting the Sober Home Initiative, the Stormwater Reconstruction, Septic-to-S sewer. Those are things that really help us locally. My only ask is, when you go next year, they remember us here locally. The local rule is something that's important to all of us on the local level, and when you go back up to Tallahassee, I'm sure I'll be happy to talk to you and make sure that you hear our standpoint, but I do appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Rochelle? Matthew? The communications bill?
Huh? The which bill?
The communications bill?
The one about the building, putting little micro towers on public property along highways? That bill?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That was a bill that went through a lot of negotiating process, and again, it's a bill that kind of goes against home rule, obviously. I think the goal was to try to come to some reasonable solution. I think everybody would agree that the technology and what we're doing with our smartphones today is changing so quickly. I mean, I've got an iPhone 6, and it's just amazing what that does. I have to tell you, folks, as a state representative, I could not do my job without my iPhone. What did they do 25 years ago? Carrier pigeons? I don't know. But the bottom line is, we need better service, and so I thought it was on the right side to be for innovation, and I'll make this commitment to you. If we find that the legislature went too far, and the dollar amount set per tower is too low, and the market shows that it's too low, there's going to be another bite of the apple. But we felt like, as a body, and I don't want to use this defense lightly, but we have 120 people in the House, so if it's going to pass pretty, and that's what your job is twofold. Twofold is to decide, is there anything, any principles that you're breaking by voting yes on the bill? And secondly, you know, is the bill going to pass relatively easily? If the bill's going to pass relatively easily, and you're totally against it, you can vote no, but it doesn't do you any good, and I didn't see any reason to vote no on it. It did take several committees to try to decide what that dollar amount was, and I think it came down around, what, $20 or $25?
It was small, but that's not our, that's not our concern. Our concern is the poles going in the middle of sidewalks and not having to be permitted through the city. Did I get that right? Max? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Well, I would love to sit down.
Because that is my belief of how the bill is, has been written, and I want to make sure that that is correct before I put that out in public. So, that's what you were voting on, was the ability to put a pole anywhere without getting permitted in the city, correct?
In the right of way.
There you go.
I'll be honest with you. I did not understand that.
You didn't interpret it that way?
What I didn't, what I thought it was, was allowing you to put them on poles.
On pre-existing poles.
On pre-existing poles, and there were some poles you could put them on, and some poles you couldn't put them on, but...
The pre-existing poles isn't the issue. It's the putting them on poles indiscriminately on sidewalks, in right-of-ways, and wherever they feel fit to do it, so.
Even if they go on pre-existing poles, some of these units, they said, are the size of a refrigerator.
Correct.
So, even if it's on a pre-existing pole, that may be a problem for us in the city without it being permitted.
So, that's where we stand on the communications bill.
That is a very, that's a very, that's a very solid point. If it's new poles, I think that does make no sense to anybody.
Correct. Does anyone else, before we say good night to Representative Roth, does anybody else have any questions? You do not?
I wanted to follow up with what the Vice Mayor said, if I could. I wanted to say it this way. The House gave me a present by not being able to get out of Committee HB 17, which was pre-emption of business regulations. As the manager knows, we had some pretty interesting conversations about that before here in Palm Beach Gardens. They also had more conversations with the League of Cities, so that was a big plus for most people not to even have to vote on that bill. That was a really way-overreaching bill, but I do want to say this, I do bring this up for a very good reason. To me, we do need to talk a little bit more about how we regulate our businesses and how we do it in a way that doesn't put them out of business, but allows them to do, to be able to find a good solution to solve the problem that you want to solve. And as the city manager knows, we were talking about puppy mills, and that was one that I think we need to talk about again. I think if we can talk about those kind of issues, individual regulations, then I think it gives, it gives me more ammunition to be against preeminent. Preeminent is when you feel like the municipalities don't listen. They just do whatever they want. The second gift was the Senate gave us Senate Bill 10, and the reason that was a gift is because the legislation, as originally intended, was a very, very bad bill, that had been very bad for jobs and business and for agriculture. And what the Senate did, just so you know, the Senate did amend the bill to make it, you know, a bill where they're now going to build a reservoir to the south and not use private land. So, the House had nothing to do. We didn't have to argue over it, so that was the gift. But I do want you to know one other thing. For the people that are expecting that to really help the issues of water going east and west, it's not really going to help. But it was the best we could do with what the situation was.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next in our presentations is the Fiscal Year 2016 Annual Audit Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and we're pleased to be able to present the Fiscal Year 2016 Audit Report to the council this evening. We do have a representative from our firm, Markham LLP. Before I introduce him, I would just like to publicly recognize and thank a member of my staff, Sean O'Brien, for his efforts in working with and coordinating the audit effort this year, and Sean does a great job. Also prepares the drafts of the financial statements, footnote disclosures, and all the other pertinent information. So, with that, I would like to introduce a partner with Markham LLP, Michael Futterman.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Michael Futterman, and I serve as the audit partner on the audit of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and I have with me Tammy Geltjes, who served as the audit manager this past year. And just following up on what Alan says, if you, if you're going to follow along at all within the comprehensive annual financial report, on Roman numeral page nine, which is in the introductory section, there's a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is issued by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and included in the fiscal 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is a Certificate of Achievement, which is issued by the GFOA. It's for the September 30, 2015 financial statements, and the city has applied for the certificate again for fiscal year 2016. Again, if you're following along, there's only a few pages in this entire document that belong to us as the auditors, and one is the main, the independent audits report, which is on pages one through three. And just to go through a few of the items in there, the first paragraph of the report talks about what we've audited. The second talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements, which is, "Management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." Third paragraph talks about the audit's responsibility, which is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, which is a set of auditing standards that, you know, exceeds just generally accepted auditing standards. But on page two is probably the most important paragraph for you, which is the opinion paragraph, and that states, "In our opinion, based on our report and the reports of the other auditors who audit the pension plans, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of September 30, 2016, and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." This is known as an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, which is really the only opinion you'd ever like to be associated with. Moving forward, I know the document is very lengthy. If you haven't read it, or if you read any part of it, there's a section, Management's Discussion Analysis, which follows our independent audits report, and it runs on page four through 16. And if you read anything in the document, if you read that, because the purpose of the Management's Discussion Analysis, which is similar to what a public company has to provide, it provides information of fiscal year 2016 compared to 2015, but just, not just tells you the balance has changed, it tells you why things changed, so you get a very good perspective on the comparison for both years. Moving all the way long to the back of the comprehensive annual financial report, as I mentioned earlier, "The audit is performed in accordance with, in addition to generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and as a result, we're required to issue a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws, rules, and regulations." And we're pleased to report that we have no findings to report to you, which doesn't happen that often. I can tell you that. We audit a lot of local governments, and it's not often that there are no findings or comments at all. And last but not least, just, there was a letter that you received, a separate letter, separate and apart from the comprehensive annual financial report, which just summarized the audit process. You had received one, I guess, during the planning stage of the audit, probably back in October or November, and this was the second part of it, which is done at the conclusion of the audit, and it just, again, summarizes the audit process. It talks about, you know, if there's any new pronouncements issued. It talks, again, about our relationship, you know, with the audit, and we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. We're pleased to report there were no disagreements that arose during our audit, and essentially, that's really what the report talks about, amongst other things. And other than that, as Alan mentioned, I wanted to thank Alan Owens, Sean O'Brien, and I guess the city manager and all the city staff for their cooperation and conduct of the audit, and be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. It was actually a, I won't say a boring read, but when you have no incident, that's always very nice. But does anyone else in council have questions or observations? Well, thank you very much, Alan. Do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. I mean, again, if you have any specific questions, be happy to, if you think of them later, feel free to contact.
I just liked the page that said "21 Years of Excellence." I think that's fabulous, so, thank you very much.
Of course, it will be posted on the website for public view, and...
That's on our agenda package, too, so.
Yes.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, next on our agenda is items of resident interest and board committee reports. So, why don't we start with Rochelle? And by the way, if there's something that all of us have gone to, why don't you just leave it to the mayor, and she'll cover it, so we don't have to repeat ourselves 10 times. Carl's like, "Yay!" Let her do that.
Trying to find which ones you didn't go to that I went to on here.
Just go ahead. Go for it. Go for it.
Why don't you do, why don't you go first, Maria?
There were quite a few community events during the month. On May 16, there was a groundbreaking for the Ballin Isles Clubhouse that we attended. May 17, the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce had their education awards breakfast. The NCNC, the North County Neighborhood Coalition, had a presentation by the MPO and the Palm Beach County Engineer on the state of the traffic enhancements that are planned for the future, and I know they will be getting with the citizens shortly about those. The PGA Corridor Association had an economic update breakfast, which I think we will agree was quite sobering.
Do you use that word again?
Palm Beach North, the Chamber of Commerce did an awards dinner that the city helped sponsor, and that was wonderful, and we all got to proudly participate in the city's Memorial Day Remembrance and Observance Event, and this morning, there was the Palm Beach North Chamber Women's Business Professional Group Luncheon.
Matthew?
Okay, it was a busy month. Just the week of May 14, I had meetings on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and we had breakfast and lunch on Thursday. Highlights of the month. At the PGA Corridor Association, we had an excellent presentation by Martin Weiss. At the Palm Beach North Chamber Breakfast, they recognized exceptional teachers and students in the Palm Beach North area, including my son's former math teacher at Marsh Point, Mr. Thomasello. Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce Awards Ceremony recognized outstanding business leaders in our community. The Florida League of Cities Luncheon had a brand-new board, and officers were inducted, and as far as the board, it included our own, Mayor Maria Marino, who was inducted. Congratulations. And there was the Ballin Isles opening and the NCNC presentation, and we had a beautiful and touching Memorial Day ceremony, and I want to acknowledge Laura Schubert, Kristy Wohlnewitz, and Paul Rogers for their work in making this such a beautiful ceremony.
Thank you. Carl?
Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to not touch on everything we did together. So, I want to say thanks to Peter. We took a lengthy tour of pretty much the Alton Project. There's still so much talk about it, and we're still, it's still in our radar, and we're still signing off on that, but I, because this was previous to me being elected, I never physically went over there and walked around and spoke to the people that are actually signing this project off. So, the huge technology building, it's something I would encourage everybody to do. It's really top-notch. Unfortunately, it rained on us, but we didn't care. We got wet, and then we went over and saw the Alton townhomes. They're unbelievable. They look small from the sidewalk, but they open up into this huge, huge thing. It's just amazing what they're doing. So, I'm trying to get the Northlake, since you pointed me to the Northlake Boulevard Task Force, we're getting that up and running, and I've got some notes here that I'm going to lead into, so that everybody knows that everybody's talking about traffic. It's one thing... It's one thing that's been, people have been talking about it for years. I'm sure they talked about it while you guys campaigned. When I was campaigning a couple of years ago, it was traffic, traffic, traffic. All of it is pretty much focused on interchange, 95 at Central, PGA, and Northlake. We have been brought up to speed through our traffic consultant and meeting with Florida Department, or FDOT officials, but I still think there's a lot of misinformation out in the public, so I'm working on getting that cleared up, and so the community knows on what exactly is going on. As you all know, I've called a meeting with the Northlake Task Force, which includes us, myself, North Palm, Lake Park, and Commissioner Valache with the county. And it's my intention to have Florida Department of Transportation at the table to discuss the latest plans for the Northlake Interchange. While it is important to improve the traffic flow on Northlake, it's also equally important to protect our businesses in that area as well, because you know, when FDOT got up here, and we were talking about the first three projects, A, B, and C, that their imminent domain was going to put people out of business, I told them, yeah, we were pretty upset, so it looks like they're adjusting. Let's see where I'm at. It's my understanding that Department of Transportation is intending to hold a public meeting sometime in September for public input on the proposed, for the design of the Northlake Interchange. And it's my opinion, and also my request from my fellow council members, to support me in requesting that the city manager organize and conduct a citizen-enforced information workshop, which information, which will share the facts, and with our citizens, all their proposed, and talking about the three interchanges, not just Northlake, we're going to speak, we'll bring everybody up to speed with Central, PGA, and Northlake. And we'll make it one large workshop, so everybody can get involved. And I recommend the city information workshop take place sometime in August, and I hope you guys will support me on this. This is an effort to better inform our citizens on this issue, because it covers from the north Palm Beach Gardens all the way down to south, and everybody in the community is going to be affected by this traffic.
Absolutely.
So...
Thank you.
There it is. Let's talk about it.
As in, you want to talk about it right now, or?
Right now. I want to know if you guys are going to support me in a workshop that we can get.
Absolutely.
And I knew you would, but I can't do it without asking you guys.
Absolutely, and we'll ask our city manager to follow up with that, if it's getting scheduled.
If that's a consensus of the council...
Anybody?
Anybody opposed?
Anybody opposed? I actually, I agree very much with you. We need to have information out, because we all have questions, too, so might as well just get them all out there together. So if we can have FDOT do a presentation of Central 95 at PGA and 95 at Northlake, and I do know there, a lot of that is in the works now, and things have been, and Natalie can help me with this, things have been moving along, so there are still a lot of questions out there, and don't want to have it too, don't want to have the information too early, because we don't have all the information yet, so.
Correct.
We will figure out a good time for it, and then when we have the right information, we will have the city manager schedule something for us.
We're targeting August, and we want to be ahead of the curve for what they're going to put out in September, so that's what our discussions have been, and we think we can get it done, and as long as you guys will help me do this, I think it'll be a good thing for everybody.
You have our support on this, Carl.
We understand your direction, and we will endeavor to put together this workshop, coordinate with FDOT, so they can help us provide information to the public about all three I-95 interchanges, and how they relate or interrelate as far as the traffic movement is concerned, and right-of-way issues as well.
That's it.
We'll do that. Thank you.
My only suggestion is that we try not to have them go through this long historical perspective of what projects they were looking at, and everyone got very concerned about those double flyover things, and that's not what we're doing, and we already know that. So when you do talk to them, ask them just to be really succinct about exactly where we are today, and not what the past three years' thoughts were, because a lot of people got confused about what program is going, what project is going where, and is it still in, are these double flyovers still on the table or not? You know, let's just make sure that they...
We understand our charge, and we know our audience, and we will pair the presentation to the audience, because I can't understand all that gobbledygook either, so we'll make it so I can understand it, and we'll be good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys, and that's all I'm doing for now.
Thanks, Carl. Mark?
Other than all the other meetings that we all went to, the one thing that, well, I went to the Forum Club of the Palm Beaches, John Kasich was there, that was quite an interesting talk. The only one that I think I went to that all of you didn't get a chance to meet with was the Lady Kristi Salmon. I met with Alicia from Go Rail. Go Rail is a national advocacy promoting freight rail, so we had a discussion about that, about what their thoughts are on freight, and we made our, it was an informal discussion, so that was something that, when and if the time comes to have that discussion again, we can further that discussion.
Good. Okay. Well, yes, we did a lot of things as a group, and we had a discussion about this last month, and there are times where we will all be together, and you might hear us talk about it more than once, but I also did attend the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and there's several projects. And I want to tell you why I'm telling you about this. Is that proper English? Yes, we go to all these meetings, but there are reasons we go to these meetings, and we're learning, and it's good for you to know what we're learning. So when I was at the MPO meeting, projects that affect us, that were in discussion, was the US-1 Intermodal Corridor Study, which actually, I have some paperwork on. Patty, I'll give this to you at the end. We were talking about FEC Railroad Crossing Maintenance, and the question, there will be a question for Ron about maintenance on the crossings that affect us. North End Corridor, North End consideration for Tri-Rail, because we are trying to get Tri-Rail in the north end of the county, a station in Palm Beach Gardens, a station, and the terminus would be up in Jupiter, which would be a fabulous way to move people north and south. There was discussion about the hood road work that's going to be done this summer, I-95 in Central, I-95 in Northlake, the widening of Beeline, the airport runway extension, and I also have a bike Palm Beach map, which the MPO is giving these out for free, so Patty, I'll give that to you also. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, which is actually sort of, MPO and Treasure Coast are very similar, in that they are training, they are looking at transportation. Treasure Coast actually looks at a lot more than just transportation, but one of the interesting things that we talked about was the Florida Complete Streets Handbook. And there is a website for it, but if you just put in Florida Complete Streets Handbook, you get this 93-page handbook, which actually is a good read. So Patty, I'm going to give that to you also. And then I did, we'll move on, to stroke awareness. There was a stroke awareness seminar. I would like to give a shout-out to our fire rescue, and our paramedics, and the several doctors from Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center and St. Mary's, who did an excellent job of giving us stroke awareness. There is information on the website about that, what you need to look for. We actually had a packed house, which I was happy to see, and we had people here, not just from the city, but from Hope Sound and West Palm, so it was nice that we reached people other than just our Gardens residents. We did enjoy the Gardens Cup Golf Tournament several weekends ago, which was in support of our Spirit team here locally, and I hope we raised a lot of money. I was happy to play as the mayor, and joined each foursome for a shot or two. For those of you that don't know, I'm a professional golfer, so I think our foursomes might have enjoyed having the mayor play with them. I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Next year, we need to have a beat the mayor.
No, we're not going to have a beat the mayor. It's more fun when the mayor gets to meet everybody. And let's see, I do want to give a shout-out to Ken Kennerly. Can you hear me okay? I do want to give a shout-out to Ken Kennerly. He was the GATA Chairman Excellence Award at the North Palm Beach Chamber, Palm Beach North Chamber Awards Dinner. And Ken, as you may know, is head of the Honda Classic, and the Honda has given so much money to nonprofits over the years that it's been here, that it was nice that they got recognized. So I just wanted to send a shout-out to him. And I want to say thank you to Natalie and Mike Morrow for attending with me the Road Impact Fee Workshop this past week with the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It was an opportunity to hear the opinions of the other municipalities on how impact fees should be distributed around the country, I'm sorry, around the county. And one interesting point that was made is that only 8% of the mobility study has to do with walking and biking. The other 93% is actual cars and trains and rails, correct? Did I get that right, Natalie? Yes. So only 8% of what happens on streets and byways is bikes and walkers. So there you have it. That's the end of my dissertation. And so now I'd like to go to comments from the public, if we are all done with items. Okay, comments from the public, please, for items not on the agenda. Did you all submit your cards? All right, I'm just going to call you in order, name and address, please. John Channing, items not on the agenda.
Sorry.
These are for items not on the agenda.
I'm not on the agenda. Hello, my name is John Channing, for the record. I represent the PGA Corridor Association tonight, and...
Address?
Sorry?
Address?
Yes, and happy to be here, and I've taken over as board member for my brother Joel, who resigned a few months ago, so I'm happy to continue the tradition of being on the Corridor Association, and my brother was one of the founding members of the Corridor Association many, many years ago. And I guess we just, as a few council people mentioned about, last week, we had the midterm economic forecast by Dr. Weiss. We appreciate you all being there. Unfortunately, I wasn't there, because I had a back issue, and I couldn't get out of bed, but I did have a table of 10, thinking I was going to show up, and I didn't show up. So I did send my son there, but I did hear that it was a little gloomy. If that's what I heard tonight, was it a little gloomy?
It was interesting.
Okay. I don't know why, I mean, I think things are going pretty well, so, you know, but we appreciate everybody showing up for that. And I know that there was a lunch that Mayor Marino was at a few days ago, and we're trying to put together a forum, and I think it's going to be called Mobility Around the Gardens. We think, we're playing around with names. I don't know what the final name's going to be, but Mayor Marino is going to be the moderator, and I think we're going to talk about transportation and what's going to be happening around the Gardens. And that's going to be scheduled for September the 13th at the Embassy Suites. So that's something that we're all excited to put together. And I want just to remind everybody that, about the green market, not that I have anything, you know, I have no ties to where it's at, but the green market is, has been moved to self-storage and line storage, and we hope everybody shows up on Sundays, and that's, we want to keep on the tradition, and we appreciate having it there. And I just, in conclusion, want to thank Mr. Ferris, who I like so much, and we have a lot of things in common, and the staff, because I think we have the greatest staff around. I like working with them. They help me out quite a bit. They are always there to do whatever they have to do. You know, we've had some issues in the past month or so with people leaving cars over at the Doubletree Parking Area Drugstore, and some people are trying to sell cars there, and we've found out who it was, and we've got it moved out, and it was becoming sort of a place to sell cars. So, but we have a lot of support. And anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Don Mathis, followed by Travis Holmes.
Don Mathis, excuse me, Don Mathis, 146 Thornton Drive. And following up with Councilman Wood's comments is one of the reasons I wanted to talk tonight, and Mary, you're part of the MPO, and know that one of the most important meetings is coming up in two weeks from today, in terms of the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, which comes on in as a combination of local, state, and federal funding for all these projects you're talking about. Little things in there, I think I pointed out to the mayor after the meeting the other day, Northlake right now, with the project to redo the interchange, and the project to put extra lanes on the Beeline between Northlake and Military Trail, are all scheduled in the same construction year. Imagine that for traffic trying to go east and west in the south of the county. It's things that this council can have a say in over FDOT, and can put some foot down and say, "We don't want that, our city has a better idea." A couple of recommendations for your transportation summit is, talk to West Palm Beach, who has a very good transportation study going on now, on Okeechobee Road, which is not all that different than Northlake and PGA. Talk to Boca about the creative development they got that's scheduled to go in Glades Road for doing something very similar to the problems on PGA Boulevard right now. They came up with a great creative solution. And to go back a little bit to Central, my deal that I've talked to you as council about several times before, I know some of you are new, but when you look on this MPO's TIP plan, you'll see that the land is not all available for the Central Boulevard interchange. In 2019, the first item that shows up as being funded on that project is $8.8 million to buy more land. That's going to take it right out of some of the projects and some of the developments along there. The land that was put out originally does not suffice what they need to build that project. West Palm Beach also was in an MPO meeting, I think it was two or three meetings ago, discussing the Southern Boulevard, expansion of an existing interchange, and we're very concerned and complaining to FDOT, and are probably going to get the plans changed, or the preliminary plans changed, because of Coniston Middle School that's within a mile of that interchange, and they don't want an impact on it. You're talking Central Boulevard, which is a mile from five schools in your hometown here. You really got to get on this transportation study, get the information, and don't take no for an answer from FDOT if you think it should be changed. You've got transportation corridors now in Palm Beach Gardens. Most of the north-south stuff, Western Military Trail, is gone. You're really looking at columns, and to tie those columns together and make them work, PGA and Northlake are your real, real problems. There's one other item in there that you heard about at the NCNC the other day, the Technology Information Plan that's going to go on top of PGA Boulevard. That works real well if the infrastructure's there. Infrastructure's not there, it'll work to some extent, but it won't handle your traffic problems you need. The only other thing in this five-year program, which goes out to 2022, that's in this big funding game, is a project to put in new pole lights at PGA Interchange for about $700,000. I don't think that's going to fix much. You couldn't be more on target with your transportation study, but I encourage you, talk to West Palm, talk to Boca, and see if you can't get their information and bring it in. They did a great job.
Thank you, Don. Travis Holmes?
Travis Holmes, 3612 Dinsdale. All right, so I don't know if you guys know, but Gander Mountain is going out of business. Camping Rod has purchased them. Camping Rod is not coming in because they cannot sell RVs. I think we should change that, just because there are 80 to 90 employees there that will be losing jobs if we do close down. Also, we are the only one between Port St. Lucie and Fort Lauderdale that sell fishing, hunting, camping supplies altogether. So if we lose that, we're going to be losing a lot of opportunities for kids. I mean, I am a fisherman myself, this is the number one place I go for that. So we just need to, we just need to keep it open, in my opinion. Like I said, there are a lot of people that come in here that want to keep it open, want it to stay open, and like I said, it keeps kids and even adults in the fishing, hunting, camping industry.
Thank you. John Bagley, and then Lance Baychats. Did I say that right? Hi, John.
Hi, Mary. My name is John Bagley, 1525 Elaine Circle. Like my colleague Travis said, I'm also an employee at Gander Mountain, but I don't feel like I'm an employee there. I feel like I'm family there. It's the first job I've had in my 42 years of life that I go to work an hour or more early, just because I enjoy being there, okay? I see kids come in there, learning safety on firearms. I see kids coming in there, learning archery, learning the skill, getting off the computer, getting out of the house, doing something, camping, fishing. And without that store there, where are they going to go? There's nowhere for them to go except Bass Pro, Fort Lauderdale, or Bass Pro, Port St. Lucie. And the only thing stopping it is camper world be able to put campers in the parking lot. And from what I hear, there's an ordinance that says they're not allowed to do that. And from what I see, I don't see a reason why there should be that ordinance. There is no eyesore, you can't see the parking There is no eyesore, you can't see the parking lot from the street. You're not going to accidentally come across the parking lot. If any of you have been to Gander Mountain, you know when you get there, you are going to Gander Mountain. It's, you're not going to McDonald's and go, "Look, there's Gander Mountain." Okay, it doesn't happen that way. All right. I mean, I'm not good at public speaking, I'm just speaking from the heart here.
You're doing very well.
Okay? But for what I can see, you're going to lose 80-plus jobs. You're going to have 120,000 square foot store empty, because as far as I know, there's nobody that's going to fill it, okay? You're losing the revenue. A $20 million a year store as it sits right now, could you imagine the revenue if we were allowed to sell RVs there? That's more revenue to the county and to the city. Okay, that's about all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your opinion. Lance? Did I say the last name right?
Close enough, Beatholtz. I just wanted to go along with my colleague saying really the same thing. I wanted to thank a lot of you that I've had communication, and Mayor, as well as Natalie with her information to my wife earlier today about the process of what is going on. Just like they've said, a lot of it with the jobs, 80, when we are in season, we're well over 100, but it's the couple of hundred family members that go along behind us. It's our customers that are, "Oh my God, you guys are going out of business, what are we going to do?" And I know they are saying, you know, going up to Port St. Lucie, going down to Delray, losing all that tax revenue in the county, you know, just as far as that goes. I know there's no formal RV, there's nothing from our company so far that's been asked, but we are asking for your support when that does come through. Marcus Limonis is purchasing, has purchased our company. He's working to try to keep as many Gander Mountains open as he can. I know he's in the 70s as of right now in Palm Beach Gardens. We'd love to be on that. Basically, I'd just like to ask what concerns you guys would have as far as keeping us open, as far as doing that bypass on the law to not have the RVs.
I am going to... You still have a minute and 37 seconds. Are you, have any more?
Just, I'll leave that for...
But normally, discussion doesn't happen at this point in time. We'll bring it up later on in the evening.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have no more cards from the public on items that are not on the agenda. Patty, are we all done? Any more cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then may I please have the city manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I have a few items to bring to your attention today. I'm very happy to announce that the Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue Department is the very first agency in Palm Beach County to achieve the American Heart Association Mission's Life EMS Gold Plus Award. The award is given to EMS agencies that meet very strict criteria in the treatment of patients suffering heart attacks. This is the third consecutive year that the Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescues received a Mission Life Line EMS Award in the very first agency again in Palm Beach County to achieve the Gold Plus Award. I guess next year, we look forward to receiving the Gold Plus Plus Plus, or we go on Platinum, but it is a huge, huge, huge award and recognition for the life-saving events for heart attack victims and the process and procedure. We are the best. In addition, I'd like to recognize the Finance Department, who has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the current budget from the Government Finance Officers' Association. This is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. It represents significant achievements by our Finance Department and reflects the commitment to the meeting of the highest principles in government financing and budget. Please join me in congratulating our Finance Department once again for their Budget Presentation And I'm not through. The Finance Department has received a final report from Fitch Ratings. Fitch Rating is the big one of the three credit rating agencies, the two being Moody's and Standards, of course. Fitch affirmed the city's AAA rating, which we have received since 2011. In conclusion of their report, I would like to read a quote. "Fitch's rating affirmation of Palm Beach Gardens' insured draft rating, default rating, and unlimited tax bond rating at AAA reflects the city's strong operating performance, solid revenue growth, prospects are further enhanced by considerable independent revenue-raising flexibility, solid control over expenditures, conservative budgeting, and low long-term liability burden." Again, please join me in thanking our Finance Department for a great report. And once again, to our Fire Rescue Department, they received an EMS grant and the award of $30,000. This is to purchase onsite training for 112 sworn police officers in their tactical combat casualty care, which teaches police officers how to control bleeding caused by penetrating trauma. Each police officer will receive personal bleeding control kit to carry. This is funded through the Florida Department of Health, and I understand our purchasing director had a lot to do in bringing this $30,000 to the Fire Department and the Police Department. And if that isn't enough, we have had two of our police officers that have already received this training and got recognition in the Palm Beach Post on May 22, showing how that training is put into use in the field when they helped save the life of an individual through this hemorrhage control. It's proven to be a lifesaver, and we want all of the officers trained to be able to do this in an effort to save life and make our citizens the safest citizens in any city in the U.S. Thank you. And I made a commitment a couple of years ago to come back to the council on occasion and let them know how we're doing in our communities as far as our code enforcement regulations are concerned, and how successful some of our compliance has been achieved over a period of time. The first here is on Santry Drive, a before and after picture, and you can see the difference in the changes that code enforcement has brought about and the residents' compliance. Again, we have another before and after picture of some improvements with much-needed improvements to a neglected pool. We have damaged electrical boxes that have been replaced. We have improvements on Holly Drive with some of the parking and asphalt areas in trying to help the community. Again, on Lighthouse Drive, you can see the before and after effects of the landscaping and paving. And so I just wanted to come back and remind you that code enforcement is out there, there's a due process, and it takes a while to get through the process, but they're out there doing their job every day and bringing properties into compliance. And thank you all very much in the code enforcement area for being diligent. Last but not least, I would like to remind everyone that we have Weather the Storm event Thursday, June 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a family-friendly event, there's no cost, and our idea here is to bring our residents up to date on the preparation for hurricane readiness. There'll be a lot of city departments here with information, there'll be the Red Cross, Florida Power Light, Solid Waste Authority, Channel 25, Mike Lyons will be here. We'll have a presentation in the council chambers of how to prepare for the event. We have prizes and drawings for generators and other prizes for people to win, and we'll be able to answer a lot of questions about pre, during, post-storm events and provide our residents with a lot of information that'll be helpful. God forbid, we should have an event this year. So with that, we'd like to make sure everyone joins us for Weather the Storm on June 8th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, next is the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as written?
No, I'm going to pull Item D off the Consent Agenda.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda minus Item D? Is that correct?
So moved. I move to accept the Consent Agenda minus Item D.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so, Public Hearings, Ordinance 11-2017. May I have the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 11-2017, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 land development at Section 78-159 permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses, and prohibited uses by repealing Table 21, permitted conditional and prohibited use charts and re-adopting same as revised. To add specialty pet boarding, further amending Chapter 78 by repealing Section 78-221, 78-345, and 78-751, and re-adopting same as revised, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I'd like to, I get to use this, don't I? I'd like to open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, ma'am.
Do we need a presentation?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. For the record, Donaldson Hearing here on behalf of the applicant, and tonight I'll make a very brief presentation, and unless there's any questions, I'll just go ahead and turn it back on over to you. Just would remind you that at this point, we're not approving any project, we're just approving the ability for a new use to occur as a major conditional use. And as an applicant presenting in front of the city, there've been many, many times I've brought petitions in front of staff for major conditional uses where staff has denied them, and we've never brought them before you. So, there's a very, very significant criteria that this use will be judged by when it comes before the staff, even before that it becomes before you as a major conditional use. So we thank you very much, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Does staff need to add anything to that?
No additional comments. Staff is still recommending approval of Ordinance 11-2017 on second reading. There have been no changes between first and second reading.
Well, I do not have any cards on this, so at this time, I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second?
I've got some discussion.
Make a motion and a second is for discussion, yes. So someone make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 11 on second reading, 2017.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'm going to bring it back for discussion. So do we have discussion?
Here's my thinking on it. I wouldn't want a pet boarding facility next to my office. I doubt that Jeff would want one next to his, or Mark would want one next to his. I think it would have a deleterious effect on contiguous commercial tenants. I think it would have even a bigger effect on contiguous residents. I don't care if you call it a specialty pet boarding or an animal boarding kennel, it's boarding. Currently, animal boarding is permitted in intensive commercial districts in our city, research and light industrial districts, light industrial districts, and general industrial districts, and I think that we should keep it in these areas. Permitting uses in the PGA corridor overlay, or I'm sorry, permitted uses in the PGA corridor overlay include art galleries, museums, bakeries, bookstores, and restaurants, and I don't think animal boarding is consistent with these types of uses. I think we're going to have problems with noise and odor and waste removal and bites. And although the facility is entirely indoors, the animals still have to be brought in and out of the facility. And I think if you look at how other jurisdictions handle these types of facilities, boarding usually takes place in industrial districts and is prohibited in residential areas. In commercial districts, they're either prohibited or allowed as conditional uses. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote against it, and I think that the first time someone steps in a pile of dog manure, or is bitten, or there's noise, the residents and the business owners will be thinking of us. So I have nothing further.
Do I have any more discussion? Okay, so at this time, do I, hearing no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion, vote passes for one. Ordinance 14, may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 14-2017, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 2 Administration at Article 3 Boards and Committees, Division 1, generally by repealing Subsection 2-861 and re-adopting same as revised, to amend the procedure for filling Board and Committee vacancies by repealing Subsection 2-96C, to amend the Boards and Committees' absence policy, further amending Chapter 2 by repealing Section 2-100 Counsel Liaison in its entirety, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 2 Administration shall remain the same as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, ma'am, and staff is recommending approval of Ordinance 14 as presented on second and final reading.
I believe there is one card. Don Mathis?
Don Mathis, 146 Thornton Drive. I just wanted to make a quick comment on this after, excuse me, the last meeting. Last year in the budget process, I attended several of the Budget Committee meetings or Budget Oversight Committee, and Councilmember Marciano was on that, one of the good professionals that you have in this city, that you were really blessed with some great accountants and CPAs and type that put their time into it. But the glue that kind of held it together was your councilman that was on there. You have a great staff, you've got professionals on the other side donating their time. The councilmember there on that budget was able to kind of tie it together, and in this ordinance, you're repealing having a council liaison in these boards. I can't speak for some of the other committees I hadn't been to, but I know I was the lone observer, and I think you can tell there's not many of these committees that get observers, but I was the lone observer at these meetings, and I can't tell you how valuable that the councilmember could tie it together with comments from the public and the ideas behind things, as well as just the numbers and things that went together. And it just, I thought it was important enough to tell you that on the Budget Committee, you need a liaison there if you're going to keep with the awards you're getting tonight for such great budgeting and that kind of stuff. It's a valuable, valuable tool, and somebody needs to be there, I think, to keep it together and keep going what you've done for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards on this. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Well, I'm going to close that portion, and may I get a motion and a second?
Madam Mayor, we'll move to Ordinance 14-2017.
And, second? May I have a second? May I have a second, please? This is a second for discussion, yes?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back for discussion, and I'm sure I have comments from the council. So Matthew, I'll start with you, since you had a lot of comments on the last meeting.
This proposed ordinance is asking us to change the city code. I think we should stick with what we have. I can tell you from personal experience, I learned a tremendous amount by attending committee meetings, and I think that by serving as liaisons to committees, it gives us as councilmembers a better depth of understanding of the issues. It also apprises us in advance, way down the pike, of what issues are going to be presented to the council. Obviously, all of us can't be at all the committee meetings, the finance, the parks and rec, the art in public places, et cetera, but with teamwork, we're able to extend our reach. But with teamwork, we're able to extend our reach. And by being liaisons, it gives us the opportunity to bring the boards' concerns and viewpoints to the council. Finally, it shows the committee members that we care enough about what they're doing, that we're actually going to see it. I made a suggestion in order to address certain issues, and I believe that we could bifurcate the Budget Oversight Board meetings, so that they can handle the issues separately. First of all, there's the big budget, which is a large amount of money, which could be handled. If there was some problem with having a council member attend the second part where they deal with the surtax, you could bifurcate the meeting, just as we segment these meetings, and you could open them and close them, and then let them deal with the surtax issue. So that would be one way to do it. I've heard some arguments against council members serving on boards. First, I was told it gives board liaisons information that other council members wouldn't have. And I guess the answer there is that—I know my colleague Carl's on the MPO, Maria's on the Treasure Coast Regional Planning, Mark's gonna be on Bioscience, I'll be at the Chamber. So unless we're gonna say that we can't attend any meetings, then obviously, we'll have separate information. Carl'll have information about traffic that I won't have. I'll have more information about the Chamber of Government Affairs, Maria'll have Treasure Coast information. So I think that's how you deal with that. Obviously, we'll have different amounts of information. Second of all, in one or two instances in the past, I'm told that certain councilmembers dominated boards, and I don't think we should let bad apples destroy what's really been a successful system overall. Another idea is to have board members present reports to the council. I don't know. For me, the core function of council is doing what we're doing now, getting down and dealing with the issues. The faster we can get to these ordinances, and the better our discussion is about these ordinances and resolutions, the better it is for me. I don't wanna dilute that by one second. I wanna get to work as soon as we can. Additionally, these are volunteers, and making them go to that meeting, then come and present to us, it takes even more of their time. And finally, as council members, we might have a different perspective, certainly, hopefully, since we live this, we would have a better perspective. So in closing, I know that when Maria and I served as—on the Park and Rec Board, and she was the council liaison, it really added to our board. And it provided her with information that she could bring back to the council. And with that being said, I'm not a city attorney, and I don't play a city attorney on TV. I'm a divorce lawyer. So Max, do you have any thoughts on this?
Why don't we finish the discussion?
Okay, that sounds fine.
And then we'll throw it to us.
Good idea.
Mark?
Well, we all heard my comments last time, and I'm sticking to them. And I've spoken to a number of people throughout, asking opinions on whether or not this would be something that would be considered dangerous, illegal, not a good thing, not a bad thing. I understand the concern about sunshine laws. I have to say, in the past three months since we've been on the council, I'm very cognizant about saying things in public, or saying things to certain people, about things that might come up in the sunshine. But we all are adults. We all went through the training, we all understand what those limitations are. We all are gonna know whomever is going to be assuming someone's on the committee. We're gonna know that we can share certain things in the sunshine, and that we have to be very careful outside of the sunshine. So I don't think that there's a real reason for us to worry about the council liaison doing certain things to influence the committee members, because we all are professionals, and we're all looking at it in the same way. I had—and to Don's point, I had a great respect for having a council liaison there, knowing that we had staff. And obviously, the—you know, we're—I don't wanna talk about just the Budget Committee, 'cause that's the only committee I was ever on, but the Budget Committee is where the dollars and cents are, and I think that's what people are most sensitive to. And we have a wonderful city finance department that continues to receive awards, and they do all the right things. But you have a group of people who are committee members, who are chosen by the council to serve as volunteers. They're going to spend time learning the issues, but they're not there 100%. You have staff who are presenting their side of it. Having a third wheel in that room, just to sit and observe, I thought was a great thing. They were our—my outlet to ask the question. So that's why I'm very much in support of keeping the council liaison. I don't think—Matthew, you mentioned bifurcating the committee. I don't think that's the right thing. I think it should be one or none. And if there's any opportunity to remove subsection 2-100 regarding the council liaison, but maintaining subsections 2-96-C and 2-86-1 on this ordinance, I'm comfortable with the other two portions of the ordinance, and I think they should remain. I don't wanna lose those two portions just because of my disagreement with the council liaison. So Max, I'm gonna ask you if you have an opinion on how that would happen, if I would make a motion to pass ordinance 11, 2017 by removing one particular subsection—I'm sorry, ordinance 14. Or how about we would go that—if anybody else would have any comment about that?
Okay. Rochelle?
Let's get that on first. This issue's also been a very difficult one for me to come to terms with, and in discussions with board members, both current and past, and others in the community, it became very clear that the city council liaisons who have served, or have been present in these various board meetings, have been an asset to the boards that they were on. And it helped both the boards and the council member understand the process and the way the city worked a little bit better. There was no evidence or any complaint that the meetings were hijacked by the council member, or steered by the council member in any way. That being said, when Palm Beach County Ordinance 32, 2016 authorized the county-wide referendum for the local government infrastructure surtax of 1%, it also mandated citizen oversight, and required an independent board to act as the advisory and reporting body to the city council pertaining to the expenditures of the surtax funds. Now, it appears to me, and it is the opinion of our city attorney, and why we have a city attorney, that the intent of the requirement precludes a council liaison to this particular board the way the board was changed when the city council passed ordinance 5 in 2017. It gave the oversight responsibility to the existing budget advisory board, and essentially tied our hands, I believe, with having a council liaison remain on the board now. I understand Matt's suggestion, if there was some way to split that responsibility of the surtax discussion from the general budget discussion. I don't know how that could be done, if it's possible to be done, so that the liaison wasn't present during those discussions. That might satisfy the county's intent on this. Without that, I think the one way we could go would be to require—and I know this is an extra burden on the volunteers that serve on that committee—to have the Oversight Review Board Chair or Vice Chair come before this council every meeting, after there's a month with a budget meeting, and go through the details that were discussed at that budget meeting, including the questions that were asked of staff, the ones that might've even been asked by email, to put before us what their thinking was, what came back, and put us all on the same page with what was discussed. I do not think parks and rec and arts in public places carry the same problem. I'm all for keeping the council liaison on those boards. I think there's no problem there. I'm just uncomfortable right now with the problem, the dilemma, of having these two oversight boards be one and the same with the intent and the advice of the city attorney.
Carl?
Well, I get to spin off of everything that you guys said, 'cause usually I go first. So the boards that Matt are talking about that are not under the jurisdiction of Palm Beach Gardens, obviously, we get to be liaisons to those boards. Within the jurisdiction of Palm Beach Gardens, we have planning and zoning, we have pension boards, and, you know, the city attorney's gonna need to answer to all of us on why boards are treated differently. There's two sides to this, and then there's a legal side. And I've done a lot of speaking with both sides and listening. I had an hour conversation with a citizen this morning, and he was—the conversation went the direction that there was an issue of having an influential—a councilperson liaison sitting in a room, having the information prior to the council, and having the ability as a human being to influence any particular board, which was a concern, and I've heard that many times. And I've have listened to other people say, "This is the way we used to do things, this is how it's done, this is the tradition." But the word "evolution" never came up. "We're evolving." We are five people have changed right here. The city's changed. And with this coming under the umbrella of the county ordinance, we're not gonna—we have picked five very qualified people to be on the Budget Review Committee. We have put them in charge of overviewing the penny sales revenue as well. I'm not sure we could find another five highly qualified board, and I don't think because they're—they come under collectively under that ordinance, that board has to be governed by the ordinance that mandates them to be independent, and by definition, that is to be—have no outside influence. And I myself, being in law enforcement, my whole—I'm no attorney, but I don't want this council to flirt with anything that looks like it's gonna be inappropriate to our citizens. And I gotta admit on this one, it's not a personal issue with me at all. It's just, this thing grew into its own thing, where it—we had so many conversations going on, people calling, meetings, discussions. And, you know, I see it both ways, and then there's the legal way, and I think that unless we're gonna treat all boards equally, regardless of how important they are, then I don't see why we should have a liaison on this board. We have staff that is the liaison to the council. We just saw all the awards that they get. And I don't want any one person to be able to influence the outcome of any decision on any board that's not gonna represent the citizens of this city exactly the way that we need to do it. That's how I feel about it.
I guess I go last. Well, I—by the letter of the law, from how it has been explained to me, and that we have to be independent, I don't feel that we should have a representative of the council on the Budget Oversight Committee. And I think that filters down to the other boards, too. But what I would like to see is that Ron and Patty, would it be possible to have the action minutes of all of the meetings forwarded to the council after each meeting? This way, if there is anything, an action that had taken place, we would know about it immediately, and we could then have our questions answered. I don't—I know we're going back and forth, and I've seen in past council meetings where sometimes the council looked to the liaison to influence their decision a little bit, and that's not independent. So for me, I—and even—I was the liaison for Parks and Rec, and I came, I listened, I did my report, and I did my report back at the council meeting. But it would've been—I think that not having a liaison from the council—as we all have enough meetings to go to anyway—but, as we've said, we have an exceptional staff who—they put the city above all else. They do not undermine anything that the city does. They're spending taxpayer dollars, but this, as I said in our last council meeting, many of our staff live in the city, they're spending their own tax dollars. So I—I look to them for guidance. I look to our city manager, I look to our city clerk, I look to our attorney for guidance, because that is what they do. That is what they were hired to do, that is what they excel in, and I think their opinion is very valid. So I would not—I would vote to keep the ordinance the way it is.
May I answer the question? Every meeting of the internal committees and boards are recorded. Also, the clerk's office takes action minutes. Those action minutes can be sent to all five council members at the same time. With that, we can send a link to the recording of the meeting, so that all five council members receive the same information at the same time. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
We have that capability.
And of course, if that—if any—if we see anything there that is actionable, we can obviously ask for whoever the chair of the committee is to come and—
Obviously, any one of you. That means all five of you have the ability to see the same information, and if you have an issue or question, request that it be brought to the council at the next meeting, and we'll provide the appropriate committee chair and information for that discussion, so we could facilitate it.
Okay, Max, I guess I'd ask you a three-pronged question, and forgive the compound question, unless you want to do individual questions. But the first question would be, what's your opinion on having a liaison attend the Budget Oversight Committee? Second of all, assuming the committee was bifurcated, so that the committee began and ended, there was a 15-minute break. The committee came and started dealing with the surtax, so it's a completely separate situation. It's a separate meeting, dealing with separate issues. How would that be treated legally? And the third question would be, does the problem with the Budget Oversight Committee affect—would that affect a liaison to any other committee other than the Budget Committee? So you can handle those as you like.
Okay. Well, initially, as I've already—I asked my assistant city attorney to write a memo to the city manager regarding this matter, and I reviewed the memo and passed it on to Mr. Ferris. And so I have already opined in detail about this, and it is my opinion that because the way that the referendum was passed through the county with ordinance 2016-032, as a councilmember Lit has already basically explained to the council and to the public, it is mandated that it be an independent citizens oversight review board. And the referendum requires that it be independent and autonomous. And that condition was a condition precedent for the referendum. I will tell you that based upon conversations that I've had with several attorneys that were involved in it, the economic council, one of the very reasons that they actually supported it was because of the independent oversight review board and that requirement. And it was a key component to get several of the governmental agencies in Palm Beach County that may have been affected by it, or that would some frequently oppose taxation, to support the idea. And it was also a condition precedent for the citizens to vote on it. That was one of—it was in the language of the referendum itself, and it was in the language of the ordinance, that there would be an independent citizen review board. It's my opinion that having a council liaison on that board compromises that independence. It says citizen review board. Citizen, when used in legislation, is a term of art. Yes, you're all citizens, but you're elected officials. Citizen means not elected official. It doesn't mean a citizen who happens to also be an elected official. It kind of obviates the independence of the board. The bifurcation—the issue that I see with trying to bifurcate the board is the board has been, by ordinance, assigned responsibilities, and it's assigned two specific sets of responsibilities as a single board. They don't convene to hold a meeting, no more than we do here. While you may break up your agenda, we don't convene and sit here as the council reviewing quasi judicial matters, and then sit as the council reviewing public hearings, or taking action on resolutions. You sit as the council, and you discharge your responsibilities as they come forth on the agenda. And it's my opinion that that board is charged with the same responsibility. So I don't—it's my opinion that bifurcation is not a reasonable option or appropriate, because that's—it just—that's not the way it's set up. And as it relates to the other boards, as we also opined in the same memo that was dated April 27, 2017, while it's where there's no legal impediment to having a council liaison on the Recreation Advisory Board, or the AIPP Board, it's not a best practice, and that's why I recommend— why I recommended against it. Up until January of 2006, the city of Palm Beach Gardens had never previously ever had council liaisons on any of their advisory boards. That was adopted by ordinance, that was implemented by ordinance 35, 2005, and again, it was passed on second reading in January of 2006. Most municipalities do not have council liaisons to their internal boards. The whole point in having a citizens advisory board is for the citizens that you appoint to that board to do just that, to give advice and, and present that advice to the council. Again, this is a policy decision as it relates to AIPP and RIB, but it's my opinion that having a council liaison on the Budget Oversight Review Board, that you would be running afoul of county ordinance 2016-032 and also running afoul of what the citizens voted on, which was the referendum that not only instituted the one cent surtax, but also required that that board be an independent citizens oversight board.
And just so there's no question, you and I have had this discussion earlier today.
Yes.
And all three questions we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment on that. You did say present the board's findings to the council. And I know they're required to do that in a summary once a year. And that it is on tape on the website and anyone can go watch it. But there's a difference between having to go and watch something and having someone come and present. And it's right in the beginning of every meeting, there's board and committee reports. The board members that I've spoken to have no objection in doing their duty and coming and presenting to council. So in order to be somewhat more comfortable with the situation, I really think that that needs to be a condition that, that we make a formal report. Staff can, can back up what the, the vice chair or the chair report and add their two cents in. But that gives us the ability to ask questions as, as well as to, to issues that we might have going forward as far as the budget not being able to be in there.
Could I ask a question to clarify which boards and committees you're talking about that you would like to see report to you on a monthly basis?
May I add something? I don't think, because some of these, because they don't meet monthly-
They don't meet monthly.
It should be that after they've had a meeting-
That's what I said originally. Yeah, that's what I said originally, in the month after they've had a meeting.
Which boards and committees were you referring to? The AIPP and RIB?
Primarily the budget and over, it depends what we decide to do about keep, if we keep liaisons on parks and rec and arts and public places and not budget, or if we remove them from all. We probably should have someone from each committee. Staff is here from parks and rec and from arts and public places usually. They could add to that presentation as well. You know, Alan is always here so he can help for the budget. I just think it would be a good practice to actually have the committee reports and the board reports.
I understand, I just wanted to understand which ones you were talking about.
Yeah, it depends how we go.
Sounds to me like art and public places, parks and rec, and budget.
As needed.
As, well, as needed. Well, they have meetings as needed. When was the last time art and public places met? A year ago?
The P&amp;Z reports come to you with every-
We get those by, every other week.
Every project that comes to you.
And there's no council liaison there.
There's no council liaison there for obvious reasons.
That's a professional situation.
Can I make one last comment before we, we vote on this?
Sure.
It's going to be very brief. We went through a whole campaign talking about transparency. I think this takes away from that, even though I know that we can all go as residents. I did speak with an attorney at the office of the inspector general. There was no reason why that this was a legal representative, reason to not have a council liaison. It was an opinion for independence. And I think that this is just one of those things that there's never been an issue in the past and it's only going to be an opportunity for those people that serve on those committees to have another person there. You've heard my comments and I don't think that we're doing anything by taking the council liaison off of these committees that is going to make anything better than it already is. We already have a great system that's working very well within our committees as it stands right now. By removing a council member, there's opportunities for questionable lack of transparency and that's my comment. Thank you.
All right, I think we've had a lot of discussion. Anyone else before I close the discussion?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Without the council member there, what types of lack of transparency do we foresee as a problem? What?
Well, you have, you have residents, you have elected members of, of the, of the city, and you have staff. And you have three different people that are, well, you have, and we are representatives of the residents. We're not representative of the staff. The staff is what they do. And please remember that this is not about anything in particular that's happening today in our city, but any departments in our city today, I'm talking future, because when we're not around anymore and our finance department's not anymore and our city manager's not here anymore and we're talking future, it's just another opportunity to make sure that you have three different sets of ears and eyes to everything that happens in the city. And because of that, you are making sure and you're gaining the confidence and the trust of our residents and our colleagues and our neighbors, that there's an elected official sitting in the room that is making sure that everything is happening the way it's supposed to happen. And that's, and not to suggest, but I'm just saying that by having that third person, that third wheel, that is the ultimate responsibility of our residents because the elected official is sitting in that room with them, they're the ones that we can, we can count, have, hold accountable for whatever happens within those meetings. It's just another set of eyes and ears.
I look forward to the vote on this. I think it's been great that we've had a chance to talk about it. I've talked about it with the city manager on the phone a bunch, with Max a bunch. And I think that it's great that we've all had a chance to discuss all this issue and hopefully resolve it.
Okay. I'm going to have a couple of comments at the moment. I did decide to go and see what Jupiter does as a council and their boards and their liaisons. I looked at them as a city that was of the same size and same type of building process that we have. And they do not have any council representation on their boards. And I do think that the ordinance as written is something that we can live with. And I say that having a liaison who is a council member sometimes can influence how things get done. And that we're talking about transparency, you don't want a council member to, to influence the citizens who are non-elected on what suggestions they should make. They should be making a suggestion all on their own as they've discussed together and then bring it to us. And at that time, we would be able to evaluate it on an independent playing field. So that is my opinion. And I think we've just about discussed this to death since it is now 10 minutes to 8:00 and we actually do have an agenda to follow. So since, I would like to close the discussion and bring it back for a vote. So at this time, all of those in favor of the ordinance as written, please say yes or please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all of those opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, the motion carries three to two. I thank you for the lively discussion. Wow. Next on our agenda is Resolution 40, 2017. Does staff have a short presentation?
Mayor, may I read the title?
Oh, I apologize. Yes, please. Would the clerk read the title?
Resolution 40, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a miscellaneous amendment to allow two residential entry signs and site and landscape modifications for a new pool amenity area in Lilac Village formerly known as Golfer's Village, which is located on the north side of Lilac Street, 0.15 miles east of North Military Trail, as more particularly described to your end, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
All right, I'm going to open the hearing. I get to use the gavel again. And ask for any expertise on this matter. Rochelle?
Yes.
Matthew will come back to. I have not. Matt? Mark?
No.
I just drove-
Just drove around?
I just drove through the community the other day just to see and I saw some workers out there doing some landscaping.
Carl?
I did, Mayor. We had, I was with the applicant in a casual setting and this village was brought up and we spoke about it in length. This has gone back many months ago.
Okay. And so do we have a petition or presentation?
I do have a presentation. Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, Nicole Plunkett for the record with Cotler and Herring, and yes, I have been sworn in. Tonight I'm going to be presenting to you the Lilac Village, a miscellaneous petition. Our applicant is FLL Lilac LLC and Cotler and Herring are the landscape architects and planners. Tonight we are requesting approval of entry monument signage and also requesting approval of new pool landscaping for common area space. Just to give you a general idea of the location, I hope that you've all had a chance to drive through it because it's, it's quite a gem within the community. It's, it's kind of the hidden gem, I call it. But the community itself is located just south of where we're sitting right now tonight. Easy access for pedestrians and residents to visit the green market for Palm Beach Gardens and also has the great Lilac Park directly east of the site. Just to give you a little bit of background history, the project itself was platted formerly known as Golfer's Village back in 1965. That's over 50 years ago that it's been here and it's pretty incredible to think about. And it was developed originally by fine builders and it consists of 66 lots, about 18 and a half acres of both duplex and single-family structures and two central common area spaces. Now, bringing it forward to 2016, about a year ago, our applicant purchased the property and they have made significant upgrades to the property, including repainting, redoing the roofs of the structures, also interior renovations, including bathrooms and kitchens. Also, mailboxes within the community to provide a consistency of the style within there. And removing some of the exotics, their exotic landscaping throughout the community and just trying to really clean up the place. Now, something interesting happened throughout all these many years before it was purchased. And you'll see that each of the, the homes is individually platted, but over the years, a handful of them were sold and have individual owners. Now, everything highlighted in the, the pink is what our applicant owns and then the remainder properties are individually owned. And while doing the upgrades, the owners were invited to participate, some did and some didn't, but they were invited to participate in a lot of these upgrades. And just to give you an idea of where we're proposing the monument signage, it's right at the entrance. There are going to be two signs to signify the entrance of the community, which I'll show you in just a minute. And then also the pool common area just within the center of the, the site. The monument signage, we're proposing two monument signs currently, and again, if you've driven past the site, there is no monument signage. So it's really going to provide a gateway into the community and provides some wayfinding as well for existing residents and potential residents that come in to the community. It's going to be composed of concrete masonry, stucco finish and have decorative tile elements. The monument signs themselves will be around five feet by 10 feet tall. Talking about the, the new pool area, historically, there actually used to be a pool in this area. And what happened was, over the years, it got filled in, so it's a planter right now. And what we're proposing to do and asking approval for is to bring back the pool that was there and develop a space and amenity for the current residents to use. We've also been working with the city forester because there are some significant oak trees within that area, but we're, we're going to be saving the majority of them and incorporating them within our design. And on behalf of the applicant, I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And does staff have anything to add?
No additional staff presentation. We are happy to answer any questions that the council has and we are recommending approval of Resolution 40, 2017.
I don't have any cards on this, but is there anyone out there that's wishing to speak on this item? So if not, I will close the hearing. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
In a second?
A second.
Okay, so bring it back for discussion. Any questions on the council for this?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Are we just talking signage or are we talking pool? Are we talking?
Both.
So we are talking pool. What comes to mind is, is, first off, I want to say that, you know, I do know the applicant somewhat and whether any of the citizens know that or you guys don't, that was a hot sober home area. And without them, and they've probably been approached with being solicited by sober homes who wanted to purchase some of that. So I think that's an awesome thing that they're, they're bringing that into, you know, into current with Palm Beach Gardens. It's going to be, it'll be a really nice thing. But I want to make sure, are we discussing the lights around the pool area to, has the police, has the fire been involved for proper lighting, like we get involved in everything else? Because I know we're talking about sign and pool, but we also need to encompass safety and security. And I could have brought it up earlier, but I just thought about it. So Dawn?
For the record, Donaldson-
I was looking for it.
Donaldson Herring, and I have been sworn. So thank you very much. And Mr. Josh Simon and Danny Simon are both here tonight and Josh is the, is the owner of the, of the project. You know, during the DRC process, we spent a lot of time working with police and fire, not only on SEPTED, Visibility Inn, because we were saving some of these large trees. The pool will not be open tonight, but the area will be illuminated for eyes in. And the nice thing about this particular space, this kind of gets into maybe some of the traditional neighborhood development stuff that I talked to you about last month, is that there's roads all the way around there. So there's not homes backing up to it, so you've got natural surveillance. So we feel very, very confident that it will be, you know, a great amenity to everybody there and continue to help uplift the area. They've literally gutted every unit, replaced every single roof. And, and any of you who've gone back there, I mean, architecturally, it's kind of a interesting old retro Florida architecture. You know, it's, it's, it's an antique. It's over 50 years old. So it's, it's really kind of cool. And Josh told the-
Wow, I'm an antique.
I'm there with you, Matthew. But, but Josh told us last, last month when, when he went through there. Now SciFi was, was one of the very early builders and developers in the city and he, he built it. But he said that you can't find a crack in a wall, a crack in a ceiling anywhere. And how could he, I mean, I've got cracks in my house and probably most of you guys do too on newer homes. He built them that well. So it's, it's a real gem and, you know, I'm excited to be a part of what Josh has tried to, tried to do there. So hopefully I've answered all of your questions, Mr. Woods.
Well, I think Carl's main concern was SEPTED. And I think you could address that.
And if I may, there is, the, the pool area and the amenity area will also be fully enclosed with a brand-new aluminum gated fence that will be secured via a lock. And so it will be locked, it will be secured, it will be accessed through a new KFOB system that the applicant is installing.
That was actually one of my questions during the agenda review because I remember reading the paperwork that said that there were vagrants before. So that's a, a great way to keep them out. And before all of this, I think I also discussed code violations before the new owner. So this is another thing. How many code violations did this community have before this owner?
Over the past, over the past several years, there's been, there's been several, there's been several code enforcement issues that have come up on, on, on the various lots within the area, dealing with maintenance, boat storage, and just general upkeep of the property. And I will say, since this property owner has taken over and invested such a significant amount of capital and time and resources, the neighborhood just looks great. And we're very pleased to see this. Staff is very pleased to see this and we look forward to seeing the continued enhancements through this application.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, may I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for doing this. It's a great community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on to Resolution 42. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 42, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, making findings in opposing conversion therapy on minors, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
And is there a staff presentation? I see none. So I do have- So I do have two cards on this resolution. Michael Fowler, first, and Andre Torrance, second, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Duquette Fowler, 201 Maison Court. That's right here in Palm Beach Gardens, Richmond's Reserve. I am on the Board of Directors for Palm Beach County Human Rights Council, also known as PBEHRC, and want to thank you, Madam Mayor and the council, for letting me speak tonight. PBEHRC's board supports Resolution 42, opposing the practice of conversion therapy, and we hope that you will pass it unanimously. Earlier this spring, we asked the city to enact an ordinance to ban conversion therapy within the city limits. And as you know, an ordinance as to oppose to a resolution is enforceable by law. For example, we enforce puppy mill ordinances, and to the contrary, what the city attorney has told you, the city can easily do the same with regarding people providing conversion therapy. City attorneys in West Palm Beach, Riviera Beach, Lake Worth, Boynton Beach, and Tampa have all reviewed the exact ordinance that PBEHRC has sent to the city attorney, and I have copies of it here, and all have allowed the city councils and their commissions to vote on the ordinances, and the ordinances have all been enacted unanimously. Similarly, ordinances have been enacted in Miami-Dade and Broward Counties and reviewed by their attorneys. We have a licensed psychologist with an office here in Palm Beach Gardens, and she holds herself out as one who can change a child's sexual orientation. And as you know, from the language in the ordinance, virtually all of the nation's major medical, psychiatric, psychological, professional, and mental health organizations have concluded that conversion therapy cannot change a child's sexual orientation, and that when attempted, it actually results in harm. Licensed mental health providers are duping parents of LGBT children out of money and causing unnecessary harm to their children. You can stop them by enacting an ordinance. The concerns raised about free speech and First Amendment issues have been rejected by every court in the country, and as a matter of fact, on May 1st, the Supreme Court, for the fourth time, refused to hear a case seeking to overturn conversion therapy. PBEHRC is asking you to direct the city attorney tonight to prepare an ordinance that he can use the same ordinance that was prepared for Delray Beach, which was unanimously passed last month, to ban conversion therapy, and we ask the city manager to place the ordinance on the agenda for the next city council meeting. And we hope that you ask, that you will ask us to be included in that process. At the first reading, we will have Dr. Rachel Needle, who will address the council and answer any questions you may have. And of course, people opposing the ordinance are also free to provide their information, after which you can make your own decisions on the ordinance. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Andre Torrance?
Andre Torrance, 122 Casa Grande Court in Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have been a resident of Palm Beach Gardens for the past 11 years. I am a licensed clinical social worker and have been practicing for close to 30 years. I am an active mental health clinician and currently the director of a children's behavioral health program in West Palm Beach. I am trained as a family therapist, and I am also an active member of the National Association of Social Workers. I am here today to speak to you about an extremely controversial and dangerous practice that I'm sad to say that some of my colleagues, maybe even here in Palm Beach Gardens, and now we know that there is at least one, continue to practice conversion therapy, also known as reparative therapy. So many of you may not be familiar with this issue, but I think you are, but if you please indulge me, I will describe some of my concerns to you today. Conversion therapy is a psychological treatment or a speech or spiritual counseling designed to change a person's sexual orientation from homosexual or bisexual to heterosexual. Such treatments are extremely controversial, not to mention dangerous, and basically, I am here to tell you that this form of therapy does not work and should be banned. It can result in youth who identify as members of the LGBTQ community to become depressed, engage in substance abuse, engage in self-harm, and become suicidal. In 2015, there was a study completed by the Palm Beach County Youth Services, and it revealed that of the high school students who identified as LGBTQ, 14% had attempted suicide that resulted in their hospitalization. 34 had attempted suicide that included harm, that did not necessarily require hospitalization. 40% had admitted that they made a plan of self-harm, and as many as 57% of these youth reported feeling sad and hopeless almost every day for at least two weeks or more. Some of this could have been avoided had they had qualified and trained clinicians that work with them in coming to terms with their identity rather than telling them that there was something wrong with them. But even given these sad true statistics, some mental health providers continue to subject these young people to this form of therapy. Currently in the United States, there are only a few states that ban this, and in Florida, there are only five municipalities that have approved this. Let's join Lake Worth, West Palm Beach, Riviera Beach, Boynton Beach, and Delray Beach in the fight to ban this cruel and inhumane practice. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards. Anyone else? Okay, if not, then I'll bring it back to get a motion in a second for discussion?
I'll make the motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
And do I have discussion? Any discussion? Okay.
I think we certainly would need to consider an ordinance in the future as well as a resolution, but I'm in favor of this resolution.
What would be the process, Max? If you could let me know or let us know what the process is to approve a resolution tonight and to consider bringing this back in for an ordinance in the future, number one.
Well, I'll be happy to explain that to you, but I think it's also incumbent upon me to address some of the comments that were somewhat inaccurate by the first speaker as far as attempting to make some kind of, I don't know, pseudo-snide remark that Delray Beach passed an ordinance, and I could bring you one like Delray. Delray Beach, I recommended a resolution to Delray Beach, and they chose to pass an ordinance against my advice and contrary to popular opinion. Any of this, any of these licensed counselors, this information is protected under HIPAA. The enforceability is nearly impossible. And so that's why I, that's one of the main reasons I recommended not adopting an ordinance as a matter of policy, and as your attorney, I don't typically bring you legislation that you can't enforce or recommend that for your approval. Obviously, it's up to the legislative caprice of the council. It's important to note that it's not just my opinion. Our labor attorney has a similar opinion to mine as it relates to the legality and the enforceability of this ordinance. It's only gone to two circuits. The two circuits it's gone to are the Ninth and the Third. The Ninth is typically a very liberal-leaning circuit, and so they upheld the ban. The Third Circuit has a tendency to lean a little bit to the left, but is a little bit more middle-of-the-road, and they upheld it. And the main reason that the Supreme Court has denied cert is because there's currently no other opposing circuit court opinion in the federal circuit in opposition. The Supreme Court almost always denies cert when there's not an opposing opinion. If they don't have controversy between two circuits, there's no reason for the Supreme Court to weigh in and opine, and that's why they denied cert in May. Unless and until it gets passed in a circuit and then gets, and then the ban gets overturned, then there won't be a Supreme Court opinion. But it's my opinion that you do have, you do potentially run afoul of certain freedom of speech issues. I think you also run afoul of freedom of religion issues as well as a First Amendment matter, because while these ordinances purport to exempt religious counseling, they don't exempt religious counseling by religious counselors that happen to be licensed under state law, which the vast majority are. You have a lot of religious counselors that, people that offer counseling, and they are licensed pastors, and they offer counseling, they're licensed to counsel people under state law, but then they also do it from their religious perspective. So that's my opinion on that. It's up for the council to determine what you want to do. If you want to draft, if you want an ordinance, then I would ask that you guys, that the council take a vote to direct me to draft one, because otherwise, I'm not going to do it.
If I may add, just a couple of comments from an administration side, not necessarily legal, but in the event this was an ordinance and became law, we haven't studied the financial impact of an ordinance and the enforcement of this. As a resolution, there's no financial impact on us. If we were to enact an ordinance, we would then be required to train code officers and police officers how to handle investigations into these, whatever accusations may be made, while being careful not to step on HIPAA laws. That concerns me a great deal from a liability standpoint. And Max has already pointed out to you about the religious exemption and the complications of the religious exemption with those who are certified to do the therapy. That process entering code enforcement and police officers making a determination about a violation of the ordinance concerns me a great deal from our liability. As you know, we do have liability when our police officers take action, should we make a mistake. Suggestion, and Max has provided the information on this, is that the legislature has taken this issue up for the past three years and has yet to enforce anything. And if I remember correctly, and please tell me if I'm wrong, the state generally regulates health and medical professions, particularly in occupational things. So I would think, just from a matter of policy, it would be much better to have a state and a broad state piece of legislation covering this issue than each and every little city, each and every little municipality conducting their own law, so that the law may, in effect, change from city to city. I think an umbrella, you know, I'm not a great state advocate here, but under this particular item, I think that perhaps the state would be more, would be better to address it on a statewide issue, and should they do that, then we would come into compliance with our own ordinance that would fall under the state legislation. That's just a suggestion. Resolution now, if we can get the state to do something and maybe even support the state legislature to go ahead and enact statewide regulations on this issue, then we could prepare an ordinance that would provide us some cover in enforcement, which concerns me from an administration side, not Max's side.
Thank you. Do we have other questions? Rochelle?
I've got, can I make a statement and some comments on this before going forward? It's my opinion, just mine, that the approval of Resolution 42 is a great start to the process of recognizing how harmful and wrong it is to subject minor children to the devastating psychological effects of SOCE, which is Sexual Orientation Change Efforts. The following groups, all listed on our resolution and mentioned by the first speaker, have studied and reported on the ineffectiveness and damaging nature of these treatments. We have them listed in the resolution, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Psychiatric Association, the American Psychological Association, the APA Task Force of the American Psychological Association, the American College of Physicians, the American School Counselor Association, a 2015 report of the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is a division of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and the American Psychoanalytic Association, and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychology. With this resolution, we are essentially saying that we agree with all these experts to the harm that these therapies can do, but we are also saying that we are not willing to stand up for these kids and do something about it. And while I think the resolution is very important, as a healthcare professional, I don't think Resolution 42 is enough to protect the safety and well-being of our kids. And I would like to see the council adopt an ordinance banning this therapy within our city limits, that's similar to the ordinances that have been passed or are in the process of being passed in many cities and states along the country. It's not just Delray Beach and Riviera Beach. We've got cities all over the country. And just for the sake of letting you know, we've got states of California, Illinois, New Jersey, New Mexico, Oregon, Vermont, the District of Columbia, and the cities of Cincinnati, Seattle, Pittsburgh, Toledo, and Columbus, as far as some in Florida, there's West Palm, Lake Worth, Boynton Beach, Miami, Wilton Manners, Miami Beach, Bay Harbor Isles, El Portal, Key West, Tampa, Riviera, Delray Beach, and Wellington. And they've all had to deal with issues on how much it's going to cost and how we're going to train our people, but they found it necessary to step up and help protect these kids. This type of therapy is going on in our city. Our children currently are being forced to undergo this type of therapy against their will. It's not a political issue. It is not a liberal or conservative issue. It is a public health issue, and it affects the most vulnerable among us. And as more municipalities start to enact the conversion therapy bans, these unscrupulous providers are going to look to welcoming cities to carry out their practices. They're going to come here, and we don't want them. So the legal challenges, there have been several over these past few years. They've been upheld in all instances. The Supreme Court has declined to hear them. We just can't wait for them to decide to hear them, and because they haven't decided doesn't mean that we should just step back and it should dissuade us from taking action. So I have confidence that an enforceable ordinance can be written to keep them from practicing this type of therapy in our city, and that we can protect our minor children from this type of therapy. And I ask the city staff and my fellow council members to move in this direction after passing tonight's resolution. So I make a resolution to pass, I make a motion to pass Resolution 42 tonight.
Resolution 42. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to pass the resolution as written.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How do we know if a clinic is actually performing conversion therapy in their clinics? Because as you said, as a matter of patient protection, and there's really no way to know unless-
The kids come forward.
A child comes forward and-
That's been the case. The kids come forward. HIPAA doesn't apply if the patient themselves reports it. It's only if the practitioner goes outside. So, and HIPAA documents can be requested if there is a criminal investigation. So HIPAA should not be a reason for us not to-
I'm not suggesting, but this is the first that I've heard that there's a clinic in our city, and I'm just questioning, how do we know that unless there has been an individual coming forward and asking that question? And I don't know, I'm asking a question.
If you had a neighbor come forward and report that they think their neighbor is being abused, we would have to do something. So if you have a neighbor or a child come forward and report-
I understand, but has that happened here in our city? Have we had, have we had that incident occur here in our city? That's what I-
It's my understanding we have.
Okay, thank you.
And just keep in mind, it won't be criminal. It's just a civil penalty.
Civil, what?
But we haven't received any complaints from anyone. At the city, no.
Not to the city.
No.
Do we know if the state legislature is moving on this to make it some sort of-
They have taken it up the last three sessions, but they, it's my understanding, they've taken it up, but it hasn't gone anywhere yet.
It won't. No time soon.
But going back to what our city manager said about having an umbrella over this, and I think, my opinion, I think passing the resolution today is a motion forward, and we can come back to this when we have more information. I'm not tabling the discussion, but I think we need to move forward with a resolution tonight, and we can continue to visit this issue. So I believe I have a motion on the table, actually, we have a motion already and a second, so I just need a vote. So all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion, the motion passes 5-0, and we will come back. We will have more discussion on- We will have more discussion on this.
And just one comment to you. This was something that came up right after the election that we discussed with city manager, and then very quickly this came to light, so that was positive. It wasn't like something was hiding under the, under the, you know, we were trying not to take care of this issue because we do recognize it and understand it.
Thank you all. I now move on to Resolution 43, 2017. May I have the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 43, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, making findings and opposing the display of wild or exotic animals in traveling animal acts for public entertainment or amusement, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation on this? Okay. May I get a motion and a second for discussion?
Madam Mayor, may I have Resolution 43, 2017?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five, zero. Thank you very much. Now we move on to items for council, action, and discussion, and the first item on our discussion list here. But before we do that, I'm going to take mayoral privilege, I guess, because you all were kind enough to say, this is where the, part of the discussion comes out, when questions come up that are items that are not on the agenda, and I said, we need to talk about it later. This is where it comes up, in later on, when we, because we do not go back and forth with questions that aren't items on the agenda. However, since this is items for council, action, and discussion, is it possible to have a discussion, or can you share with us what has happened with Gander Mountain? And Natalie, that would probably be you, wouldn't it? Sorry, you were walking out the door.
Do you need to go?
Do you need a moment? I'm sorry.
Should we handle something else?
Is there, is it a short discussion? Because I know we've had-
Very short.
Okay. So we can, we can answer whatever questions we came, we heard earlier. I know Gander has been, I have gotten several emails about Gander Mountain, and we talked about the, what the, it's the development order that says there are no RVs allowed on premises, but can you-
Sure. I would be, I would be happy to explain that. My name is Natalie Crowley. I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning, and we have been in contact by a few residents and folks who have reached out, concerned similar to some of the concerns that were expressed this evening regarding Gander Mountain and the purchase of, of the site and the issue of the RV. So, if I may. So Gander Mountain was approved in 2007 through the city's expedited permitting process. We approved the facility recognizing, the city council approved the facility recognizing its economic value. When it was approved in 2007, there was actually a special code change that was done at that time to specifically allow for boat display and all terrain vehicles within the facility itself. Previously, before it was approved, that wasn't allowed in the commercial zoning district. So the city council, in recognition in 2007, said, we, we value this employer so much, we, we are changing the code to allow for these vehicles to be stored inside. We expedited the permitting process. And there was a specific condition of approval in respect to outdoor display that limited and restricted, and it wasn't specific to RVs, but there was a condition, and it was in the development order at the time, and it's also consistent with code, that specifically stated that no outdoor storage, repair, sales, or display shall occur at any time unless approved by the city council. That condition was agreed to by Gander Mountain at the time and was put in the development order. And it is also important to note that that is code. So I understand that there was, there's quite a bit of correspondence that, that went on recently. Staff hadn't been contacted whatsoever by any representative from, from Gander Mountain until May 19th. I was contacted by Ann Booth, who was an agent representing the property owner of Gander Mountain, because Gander Mountain does not actually own the site. It is leased. And Ann Booth, who is an agent of Urban Design Kill Day Studios, frequently does business here in the City of Palm Beach Gardens, asked the same question. She was familiar with our process, of course. I explained to her the development order condition. I said, we would be happy to look at some kind of plan, which would show, whatever the proposal is, we, at this, at that point in time, hadn't even received anything whatsoever. We had just been aware of the, the public comment that had been in respect to the RV. So we had received no contact, no application, no information in respect to it. However, when we were contacted by an actual representative representing the property owner, we explained the process to her. Since that time, it's my understanding that she is actively working on some type of plan that will be presented to staff and which we will be happy to meet with her and review a plan. So that's where the process is. Really, I think the question was asked, would there be some type of entertainment of, you know, of RVs? And, you know, I would submit certainly from staff's perspective that we would simply need to see a plan. I don't know, there could be a lot of considerations in the review of, of RVs, and one of them primarily is the impact of the parking area and parking spaces, and the, the loss of parking and the accommodation for that, and, and potential view corridors. So really, without a plan, staff would not be able to make an opinion at this stage on any question like that. But we welcome a plan to be submitted by Ann Booth, and when that is done, we will be happy and willing to meet.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and thank you for opening up the discussion. Hope that helps. Probably not, but hope it helps.
Some questions?
And, sure.
In terms of timing, well, actually, let me go first. If they were able to get approval for this RV, would they stay in, in the gardens?
Yeah.
Well, that's-
He stated that's the only thing stopping.
Okay, second of all, is there a timely, is there a timing issue?
He wants to open up all the-
Can you come to the microphone, please?
I was actually asking Natalie, to your knowledge, Natalie, is there a timing issue that you know of?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any issues that are quite honestly privy to the business owner and the operations at this point. I have only been contacted with Ann Booth, been in contact with Ann Booth, who represents the property owner, and we've explained the process. So if there's a timing issue, it is, it's, it's a business matter, and it's a business matter between, I'm sure Camping World and Gander Mountain and the property owner. So the city is not privy to those details.
Okay.
I was just going to let you know, he, he informed, he said that he wants to have the new Gander Outdoors, which is going to be the name of the new entity, open by November 1st, is what he has stated.
In, in order to do that, he needs to meet with staff.
I understand.
So he needs to bring his-
You asked if he had a timeline.
Yeah. But in order for that to happen, they, they'll need to come in front of staff with a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more discussion on Gander Mountain? Okay.
Maria?
Yes?
Just one clarification. So it's not going to, was not purchased by Camping World? It's going to remain with Gander Mountain? Is that, we, we haven't got, we have no idea yet.
We're not privy to any of that information.
It shouldn't be on the radar.
Okay. All right. So we're going to bring the discussion on Gander Mountain to-
I was just going to let you know, Camping World purchased Gander Mountain. It is going to stay Gander, he's changed it to Gander Outdoors. Camping World is going to be a separate company. Gander Outdoors is going to be a company. There's a lot of work.
There's a lot of work, and it's not something that any of us can do this evening, but thank you for, for bringing the information to us, and I'm sure someone will come to Natalie because nothing can be done without coming to the staff and having a review.
Can you have a circular memo?
Correct. All right. I would like to now move on to, we're done, right? Okay. Charter review committee? Do we have a presentation? No?
Memorandum.
Have a discussion? I did read the memorandum. I think we all did. And I know it is something that we need to move forward with, and I think we all, we all read the information that was attached to our package. Do I have any questions on the information? Because we're going to start getting our butts in gear, because if I'm not mistaken, we have adopted a resolution, we have a timeline for this. In order to get on the March 13th agenda, we have a timeline. So basically, we need to, we, as a council, need to submit some names and then vote on them. And I'm guessing, from a timeframe, we should be doing that tonight? Submitting names tonight?
No.
Tonight, don't, do we have to figure out which, what we want, how the committee to be composed? Is, is that what we're supposed to discuss?
We just have to discuss.
We have to discuss. I adopted a resolution, appointing members would be August 3rd, but that would have to be information in by July 24th in order for it to be published a week in advance of a council meeting. So we're discussing because we're going to adopt, we would like to adopt a resolution next, next month, correct? Okay. All right. So, discussion. Who would like to go first?
I have a question. On, on the, the recommended composition of the committee that came up, just so I'm understanding the ideas that were put forward. There's two choices, to have a property owner for a minimum of five years, then business owner for five years. If this is an, an either/or or a both. If we go with the or, and it's a business owner, then we would not be able to go with registered, necessarily with registered voter in the city, if we're not going property owner and business owner. Because if it was just a business owner, they may not be-
Well, they have to be a resident of the city, yes.
So we have to decide, to me, that one is the, one of the most controversial ones to discuss, is whether we think the people we're, should be on the committee, should be residents of the city or not.
I believe that people on this committee should be residents of the city.
Yeah. No real question. No, I mean, I, I, these are just recommendations. You don't have to own a business in the city, you don't have to, you know, but you should at least live here for a minimum of five years and be a resident. I mean, those are the other things that are good. The question I have regarding the selection of, I have two questions. One about selection of candidates. Well, I have a lot of questions, but I'll start with those two. How many would you suggest we bring up? Just one? Because what happens if each of us bring up the same person, and then now we're not, so we should probably bring two, if not three, I would think.
I would think so.
I would think that if you like the concept, we'll work out the details for the, the resolution. But I think our conversation so far has included the idea of having more than one recommendation, so that if someone else has your same recommendation, or they don't receive the votes necessary to get on, then you have an alternative to go to. So I would suggest at least two, possibly three. And you could rank them in priority and get them to the city clerk by the deadline so that she can meet the agenda, the agenda for the August, August meeting.
Right.
So we can put all of these details down in the process and the procedure, if you tell us what you like, you don't like, and what you want to change. This, this is all just recommendations, so, and those can be guidelines, they don't have to be requirements. Whatever makes it, you know, the process better for you, we're all about, so, just, oh.
Patty, you had mentioned during our review the other day about the different times for the election, and I see we're trying to consider putting this on the March 18 election, and there's some concerns about that, but there's also a lot of concerns about August of 18, November of 18. And I really think this has to be completed before March of 19, when the next city election is in play, because whomever is going to be running for office really needs to know what the charter says about elected officials, because I'm sure there's going to be some items on the charter review that will apply to the elected officials. So I think August, we have three, we have three opportunities. August of 18, November of, March 18, August 18, November of 18. Those are the only three opportunities we have before March of 19. So can you just review what you-
Yes. As you stated, the March 13, 2018, which is a uniform municipal election. Every March, that's the opportunity for municipalities to either put candidates or questions, annexation, or all three on a ballot. The August primary would be considered a special election, and as part of our agreement with the supervisor of elections, we have to get that information to her and her permission at least 90 days in advance of going on to the August primary. The August primary ballot is going to be very, very lengthy. As I mentioned in agenda review on, in Monday's paper, already 18 people have opened up campaign accounts to run for governor. And that's just one position. There are going to be other things on that ballot. So you're looking at, at voter fatigue, you're looking at voter apathy when it comes to, to the ballots, because if a municipality has a question or anything on that ballot, it goes to the very bottom of that ballot, and it could cause a two, three, four-page ballot to be produced.
Well, Patty, you used the word permission. Is there a possibility she could refuse it off the August ballot?
Well, not likely, but that's why we're not even entertaining the November, because she has said November ballot, we cannot go on. It, it's not likely that she would reject it, but you have to, within the guidelines of the agreement, you have to submit it at least 90 days in advance.
And August already seems to be-
It, it's going to be an extremely, yes, yeah. Very lengthy ballot.
Don't we have more residents here in March as well?
I'm sorry.
We have more residents that, that may be here in, in March than would be here in August as well.
Mm-hmm.
And November is not an option? November 18 is not an option?
No, no, sir, it's not.
So it's March or-
Or August, which would be considered a special election. I'm sorry, Natalie.
The reason that the SOE has taken that position as it relates to November is because that November election is the only opportunity that the county has to put their referendums and things on the ballots, and that's why she typically says no on that, on this, you know, this even year November ballot.
Okay. So we have, we're trying to use a guideline with March 13th. I'm actually comfortable with the March 13th, 2018 guideline, as long as we get our-
Moving on.
Our time, I think we have enough time. And I do think that the recommendations of how the composition of the committee is made up is a guide, as, as we said, is a guideline. The, I think we should come up with two, at, at least two, maybe three, three of us, three people each, and you never know, we might all come up with the same people. So we need to have a little depth if we do all come up with the same person, because I know in our last meeting, we already had one person volunteer. So I'm comfortable with the way this is laid out, and the audience is welcome to read all this information on our agenda package here. We will be doing public outreach. There was, there is a cost involved to this of close to 90 to $110,000, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I am, anyone have any other questions or comments?
At what time would, Max, would you be able to give us, I guess we wouldn't, I mean, because we're having the residents, well, the committee is going to hear the, the recommendations that you're going to present, and then there's going to be an independent auditor or an independent third party. Now who's that person going to be, and where do we find somebody like that?
If you want, I'll address the first part, and then you can-
Okay.
The city manager will talk to you about the, the facilitator. What I planned to do was provide them the annotated version of the, of our current charter that I had prepared a few years ago, and the annotated version of the proposed charter that I had prepared a few years ago, as a starting point for them, for the committee. And I was going to meet, whenever the facilitator got chosen, I would meet with that facilitator, provide that information to them, and then allow the facilitator to then, you know, do the committee. I mean, because I think it's important that, since you're choosing to go about it this way, from the city administration and the city legal perspective, is that we, we don't want to be, want to be uninvolved as much as possible, and that the idea would be that you ideally, if you select the right group of people, so that you have people with the skill sets necessary to, to go through this and, and come up with the recommendations, that then they can come up with the recommendations on their own, without the possibility of staff influence or legals' influence or anyone else. I mean, obviously, at the end, I'm hoping that the reg, the recommendations that they bring forward would be legally sufficient. I'll have to ultimately look at them for that, but I don't think that they'll, hopefully that shouldn't be too heavy a lift. But that would be the idea, is that they would have independence, and then Ron can talk to you about the facilitator.
For those who haven't read the report, it basically puts forth the responsibility for the committee to be appointed by the council, and the council would elect by vote the five people that would sit on this committee. It's also proposed that we get a facilitator, which is a consultant that has experience in this- It's also proposed that we get a facilitator, which is a consultant that has experience in this line of work and there are many of them, to be selected so that the consultant would, again, get information from the attorney, would interview the council members as to what their opinions of what the charter committee should address and then conduct the meetings with the charter committee and with the eventual outcome in October, I believe it is, to report to council what their recommendations would be. As always, it is the council's decision what will or will not go on a ballot. And that would be made by December. So we'd hire an outside independent consultant to run the meetings. We would hire an outside independent PI group or public information group to be able to, from December to the election time, to be out there providing the community with the information they need so that they would be an informed voter when March comes along. So this keeps the council at arm's length, it keeps the staff at arm's length. And whatever the committee comes up with, they come up with. But the decision of what goes on the ballot, like I said, eventually comes to the council's decision. Two readings on it. Is that enough explanation? Okay.
Yes, it is. Thank you. That was good. Are we moving on to our next?
So we have to have names, no, we don't have to have names for the next meeting?
We should have names, we should each bring three names to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, okay.
Okay?
No, at, at the next meeting.
I'm sorry, no, you're right.
The July 13th meeting.
We're doing the resolution and then on the, at August 3rd. But we, you need the names at our August 3rd meeting, correct?
No, the deadline for the names will be Monday, July 24th to ensure inclusion on the August 3rd meeting. And all of this will be put in the report as Mr. Ferris has said.
We'll, we'll come back with more details now that we know you're okay with this process. We'll give you more details as, as we develop the procedures.
The resolution.
And the deadlines.
Will incocate all of your.
Yes.
Okay, so what we should do is we should talk with people, see if they're willing to do it. And, and after we've talked with them, then make recommendations.
Yes.
So our August 3rd meeting, we will have, the names will be published of who we're considering and in the August 3rd meeting will be who was chosen.
Correct.
Yes, you will vote on that, yes.
All right, and you need the names by July 24th so we can go in the agenda and be published a week in advance and.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there you go. All right. So. At last month's council meeting, if I'm not mistaken, there was a question about the impact of the $25,000 homestead exemption. So I know we're all concerned about that.
And before Alan starts, we addressed a number of different methods that staff would be using to examine the issue of that, the potential loss of revenue from the potential positive vote of the homestead exemption increase or decrease, depending on how you look at it. But loss of revenue for the most part. And so there are many, many, many different methods of dealing with the issue. The ultimate results, of course, is the most important part of how that's dealt with. And so the memorandum was written basically as an informational tool to show you how many different ways we could look at this. So I've asked Alan to put together the ultimate results of decision-making to show us what will happen. Now, and I know this will sound like a paid political announcement, but this is something I am, I am devoted to and deeply, deeply concerned about that the financial condition of this city is second to none. And that has been demonstrated over the years. The reason that is, is because we have sound fiscal management and we have strategies in place that address fluctuations in revenues, fluctuations in expenditures and unforeseen circumstances. And the reason that we are in this position today, one of the main reasons, is that council prior to this has adopted a policy of maintaining a flat millage rate over the years, which gives staff the opportunity to address all these different fluctuations. We're flexible enough to be able to do that with budget stabilization reserves, which serves as a fund and an ability for us to fund operating expenses without having to ask for increases in millage rates, which has been a long time since that has happened. It also provides the ability to address one-time expenditures, unanticipated, or expenditures that need to be, that's brought to our attention. So it has been the policy of previous councils and supported by staff and demonstrated by experience that our sound financial position, as you've heard about tonight even with the Fitch rating, the Standards and Poor's, Moody's, our solid financial position is based upon this very theory and operation that we've had for years. So with that paid political announcement, I love this process. It has worked and we would like to see it continue to work. And Al will show you how it works based upon impacts to this millage rate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, again, for the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator. And so what we have done is prepare a couple of charts showing a couple of different scenarios, taking into account the potential impacts from the increased homestead exemption, which would go into effect in fiscal year 2020 if it is approved. So as Mr. Ferris mentioned, we do have a budget stabilization reserve fund. Just a very brief background about, about that fund. It was established in 2011 when we refinanced some debt. We were able to get the requirement to have a separate debt service reserve fund, which was about $2.4 million eliminated. And that had to do, it's a direct result of the upgrade in the city's financial rating at that time. So that was a very tangible benefit of having the AAA rating. So rather than just throw that money back into general unassigned reserves, we set up this budget stabilization reserve fund that Mr. Ferris has mentioned. So what, getting back to the charts, what we've done is, I said, prepared a couple of scenarios of what the potential impacts would be under different millage rate scenarios on our budget stabilization reserve fund. So on this slide before you, again, just to explain the chart, the green bars represent the budget stabilization reserve fund, which is estimated to be about $2.5 million at the end of this fiscal year. And then if we were to keep the rate, the operating rate the same at 5.55, which is represented in the blue line going across, you can see the projected impacts of the potential increase in the homestead exemption as that kicks in. However, that increased exemption or lost revenue is mitigated by holding the, our millage rate flat at what it is currently. This gives us opportunity for those revenues lost to be, started to be made up with new construction, other types of growth, annexations, just overall increases in property values. So under this scenario, as I mentioned, the projected 2.5 million at the end of this year, at the end of a five-year period in 2021, budget stabilization reserve would be about $1.7 to $1.8 million. The next scenario that we'll take a look at is if we were to reduce the operating millage rate. What we've done in this slide is to say, okay, let's reduce it five cents, which is not very much. It's, you know, less than 1%. So again, the blue line shows the 5.50 operating millage rate being maintained over a five-year period. Again, we start out at the left, the 2.5 million in the budget stabilization reserve fund. And under this scenario, you can see we actually deplete budget stabilization reserve fund. The red area indicates it actually goes negative. And what that means then is that, you know, we don't have any more in the budget stabilization. We've started to go into the other $23 million in unassigned reserves that we try to maintain a level amount, which is used, would be used for major disasters, hurricanes, major storms, those types of things. So then the third scenario that we'd like to show would be, what if, we said, what if we lowered the rate for a few years until the budget stabilization got very low? And then we decided in the fifth year out, we wanted to restore, replenish the budget stabilization to about what it is right now. So you can see under that scenario, you would maintain a 5.50 rate for four years. And then it would, to replenish the budget stabilization fund, it would require to raise the operating rate from 5.50 to 5.75 in that fifth year out. And then the last slide, just wanted to show kind of the history of our operating and debt service millage and our total millage rate going back to fiscal year 2011, which is the last year that we actually had a rate increase on our operating millage rate. So again, you can see the operating millage rates from 5.7404. In 2015, there was a decrease to 5.67. And in 2016, the decrease to where we are currently at the 5.55 rate. And again, in this projection that we're showing, we're assuming that that rate would be held flat at 5.55. Moving to the next column, you can see the debt service millage, starting out at .1854. And this millage goes down every year because it's strictly just the calculation of how, you know, our debt service is 1.3 million, say, that's how much we need to generate. And as property values go up, then just, the math says that that, that rate will go down. And so I wanted to point out, if you go down to fiscal year 2020, our general obligation debts will all be paid off. So that debt service millage actually will go away in fiscal year 2020. And so if you look at the far right column, our total millage rate, because of the debt service rate going down every year and the couple of years that we have lowered the operating rate, you can see every single year that there has been and projected in the next few years that the total rate paid would still go down even if we keep the operating rate flat. So again, those are the projections. Again, I want to point out, these are very, very preliminary numbers. We are still working on compiling all of the budget data from, from all the departments, going through that review process. The revenue side, we have updated it for the information that we received Friday as far as the preliminary estimate for our property values. So, but it is still a work in process. And just wanted to make sure that council understands that it is still, it's not, these are numbers that are not final by any means.
Once again, I just would like to reiterate, we think that we're prepared to meet the challenge that is potential there for us in our fiscal year 2020 by maintaining the tax rate. We're concerned if there, you know, a two-year reduction in tax rate hitting it twice could result in some negative impacts in our financial condition. So we think along with this, along with additional growth revenue, along with potential annexations, a potential increase in property values and those types of things that we analyze and deal with every year before we do our five-year forecast, financial forecast. We think that between all of these scenarios, we will be prepared to meet it. I've been asked if, if it wasn't for the exemption, threat of the exemption, potential loss of revenues, would we be in a position to lower taxes this year? And I haven't, I don't have completed budget to answer that question totally. But would we be in a position? Yes, we would be in a position. But with this looking at us two years down the road, I would be remiss to say that we could do that and not experience the sharp inclining in millage rate two years out. So I would be cautious about that.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm sure, some questions? Anybody, comments? I actually have two. So if no one else has any, I'm gonna go ahead. So debt service, and I remember this, we've had this discussion several times, that it's gonna be totally retired in 2020. I think there was a mistake in the paper that said 2023 or something like that. So I'm glad to see the reminder that it, that our debt service goes away in 2020. And by ordinance or resolution, we have 17% in reserve set aside?
Council policy.
Council policy. That I think maybe we need to revisit that. I think that need, should need to be a higher number. And if our, if our, if there is no more money going into the reserve account, which is now a 20, roughly $23 million, and our budget increases, the percentage that that $23 million is in comparison to the rest of our budget is going to continue to get smaller.
We will look at that and look at the policy and see if we can come back with something at budget time that would perhaps address that. But we'll examine that and bring it back at budget.
Thank you. I'm, great presentation. Thank you for always looking after our dollars in a wise manner. I do appreciate it. And I know there's been a lot of, lot of push on us to lower our taxes. And I think we were, we were all in favor of that until this dropped in our laps. And it just goes back to the, who was really working for us? Who's really working for us up there in, in, in Tallahassee and the, you know, the assault on home rule right now? So thank you. That was my political comment. All right. Do, does anyone have any other questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do you have a report, Max?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Max?
Good. Then you have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. It's been a long night. Thank you.